Meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's August 23rd, 10 o'clock. All three county commissioners here, and we'll start with county administrator with consents and approvals.
Morning.
Good morning.
I have 22 exonerations for 9,63431, six requests to create new statements, 34,0052691 minutes for August 16th, 2023. Vouchers, General County, 15,35393, 911, 9,0052311, Chestnut Ridge Park, 3,0050723, Camp Muffley, 13,77731, Mason Dixon Park, Park 505 even, allocated coal, reallocated coal, $325. Assessor's valuation, 1,099350. I have purchasing card vouchers, General County, 22,97529, Magistrate Court, 1746, Chestnut Ridge Park, 7648, Camp Muffley, 15296, Mason Dixon Park, 7648, Mon County Center, 13910, assessor's valuation, 5,79545, for a voucher total of 74,21830. We have budget revisions, one that requires in-house approval for general fund for insurance programs, state approval, general fund, sheriff's tax office, prosecuting attorney, ag agent, law enforcement, dog warden, and dams and dredging. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for August 23rd, 2023.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward, introduction of new employees and personnel changes.
We've got the circuit clerk's office.
Circuit clerk, Martha Z. Z.
Z.
Is here. Okay. Martha McGraw-Z, she is starting August 21st, 2023, at the rate of $15 per hour. She's temporary part-time.
Move to approve personnel position as presented.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Assessor?
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. I'm here to ask approval for the hiring of Mr. Dalton Radford. Mr. Radford will be starting as a personal, or not personal property deputy, your real estate deputy, and he'll be replacing Perry Harmon, who's moved into our appraisal department. Mr. Radford will start August 28th. He'll be full-time with benefits eligible and a 90-day probationary period.
Move to approve personnel as presented.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Castle for Kids, Brooks, Brooke Parkinson.
Her start date is September 1st, 2023, and it's 35,000. This is a full-time eligible employee.
Move to approve personnel as presented.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. Do we have any other? Okay. At this time, we'll have comments from the public. If anyone would like to come down, state your name, your address, and feel free to speak. Is there anyone who's interested in doing that? Sure. Okay. Do we need to get the mic down? Hold on, we're gonna get the mic down to help you. Okay.
Hello.
Good morning. Morning.
My name's Christina Bowles. My address, I'm a homeless person. My address, mailing address is 341 Spruce Street. I have a lot of concerns about everything in the area. If you don't go to Bartlett House, people are on the streets, but my bigger concern is stuff that's going on throughout the county. There's... They send you from the street, from uptown, and they tell you to go where, the police say, go where they can't see you. So, we, I went where they couldn't see me, but I'm down by the water and everything, and a few places. And today, I was also woke up, and I was given a trespassing ticket at the depot, but the police seen me there last night and let me, let me stay on the bench because I was a little bit scared to be out in the woods or down by the water by myself. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on down in there, and a lot of screams on the weekends from our teenagers or our college kids. I don't know what it was, and you may think I'm crazy, but I saw the newer people, they go down in them little woods by the bridges. I was looking for someone, and they said, oh, he's over there. Well, I went over there, and I was a very big something. I don't know what it was, but it was, it was eating something, and it's big enough to eat something, to eat one of us. It just sounds crazy, but, and I've been working on an issue of trying to have a place, like, like, sort of, like a development. I went to those county developers and got some maps, and I'm really nervous.
Take your time. Take your time.
But 10 years ago, when I moved here, I saw something similar down there when I first come here. And it was only about like this big, but this thing is this big. The paths, I was very shocked about the path that's through the woods here because it's been about four, maybe four and a half years since I've been down in there with these, and seen these trails. And there's, the ducks aren't here like normal, but the other day, when all this happened, ducks come through. I don't know where they come from, but there was ducks here, and I saw a cat, I saw something eat a cat. It was down in there, and I've never, I don't see very many animals. The birds are back, and our waterways, people, archaeologists are going to digs and find stuff. Well, I brought my camera with me of some pictures that I've taken and some stuff that I've seen while I've been down by the waterway. And I'm concerned for people's safety, especially our teenagers, because they are really, when you're in college, you drink, you party, and they run, you know what I mean, and they, a lot of them don't have any concern for, they think they can, they're invincible, you know? But late, late at night, when I've been up here, the screams are awful. I don't know if they've been, if anything's happened to anybody here. I don't know if they're from out of town or if they're in college or what school, but over the summer, they weren't in college. They wore some glasses. And the screams are terrifying. At this time, through the summer, from what I've learned on the streets, there's a certain group that comes in. I really don't think it was any animal that made these screams. There's a lot of people in the woods that nobody sees or knows of, and it's... I've seen cages made out of tree bark, gates across, openings in the mountain, and that's just right here.
Could I ask, just when you're saying where, can I just, where you're talking about, where is here, that's, so you're trying to get a clarification? Is it in the city limits?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I saw, I really don't know where I'm supposed to go. Everybody tells me I'm crazy, but I think that's because a lot of them out there know about it and don't say anything or don't want caught. But I know if it was my children in school in a place where they're not familiar with, I would be worried if I had it, they would get a hold of my daughter from it's a baby for two months. And that's one of my biggest issues of the whole thing of, when I was in Charleston, the goal was to end homelessness by 2024, and I do believe that there's many ways that people try to do this. At the Bartlett House, if you're just 15 minutes late, they kick you out, period, period. If you miss the bus, you're pretty much SOL, I guess. That's one of the reasons I don't go out there is because I, I even called the police or finally got the police down there by the bridge by sheets. And all I did was, I showed them what I saw, and all they did was told me to pack up and go somewhere else, away from there. I really think that the people, whoever's in the woods, I think that they're maybe the trafficking line of children and women. I think they're hidden. When you're down, when I'm down there, you can hear, in certain places, you can hear someone talking. And they used to tell me it was just me, but recently, other people has been hearing it and telling me about it. There's, when it rains a whole lot, there's like sludge. It looks like sludge, but more like quicksand type stuff. It really sounds crazy, but I'm, I won't even go in there. When I first moved here, I went down through them woods. There was a little path, and just one little path went through, and it was fine, but there is... I saw, it must have been something in the sludge, maybe, and it was, it was very disturbing.
If, if I can expand the rules so we can at least respond.
Second. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
What we can do is take your information and contact the city administration and also the city police and ask them, because that's inside the city, so we can try and help you out. I know they have something going on in the next week or two underneath the bridge and, and the places that you're talking about. So hopefully, we can do that. My only other question to you would be, have you gone to Health Right to work with them?
Yes. I, when I come, I was in the hospital in December, and I had, my male's been at Health Right for 10 years. And when I went to the hospital in December, I needed, my daughter, she come, the hospital sent me to her in Pennsylvania. And the lady, I was staying with household, and they, my daughter couldn't afford it, so she brought me back. And I've been homeless since, since March.
You are working with Health Right?
They said they have no funding. I had a house, I had an apartment set up in South Park, and they, they were slow on getting me into it and talking to Michelle Watkins, so later, Michelle said, she come up with something, I had to have three times the money, even with an agency. And I know there's a lot of agency, or a lot of people that are homeowners doesn't want to work with any of this businesses that's helping homeless, because a lot of these homeless people have never been inside or don't know how to act or don't have case management, they don't have follow-ups, they don't have visits periodically, which...
Christine, we, we are hearing your plight, and we understand, and we're very concerned. We will try and get the information to the correct authorities. We appreciate you coming down, and we will also immediately, when the meeting's done, I will call. In fact, I just got a text from Emily Musarelli, who's asked for me to call her, so I will do that on your behalf. And also, my recommendation is to go back down to Health Right to see what other avenues they can offer you and have them connect you with West Virginia Coalition to End Homelessness.
I've done that.
So, so that's what we're gonna try and do, okay? We appreciate you coming forward, and we will pass on this information, okay?
I have one other question. I, I've been looking at an area that is undeveloped, and I've been doing some research. I've been working on this since 2019. I, I don't have it all put together yet or anything, but... If, I don't know. Thank you.
Okay, well, we will pass on, and I will talk with them after the meeting today, okay? And why don't you, you might want to head on back down there to talk with them, and then tell them that we will be calling them, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the comments from the public. Do we have a presentation? My Park Pass Aquatics and the Track Complex at Mylon Park. They had to reschedule. Oh, okay. Do we have any grants? Okay. Thank you for helping her. Thank you.
I have a request for reimbursement for the Community Development Block grant in the amount of $1,774.08.
Move to approve the president's sign and the grant documents as presented.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Correspondence. Letter from Micah Shriver regarding the Wadestown Show and Sale on August 26th, which is this weekend.
He is selling a lamb at the show and sale. He's invited you all to come out. The show is at 11 o'clock, and the sale begins at 6 o'clock at the Wadestown Fairgrounds.
Thank you. Card of thanks from McCartyville Community Building, basically, association regarding financial support for the park porch roof, and that's self-explanatory. Any other correspondence?
Yeah, I just had one, it came in the mail from Charles Bunner. He's just giving you an update on the National Horseshoe Pitchers Association.
Okay, thank you. Any other correspondence? Seeing none, we'll move to unfinished business, to new business. Consideration of appointment one to the Montague County Building Commission.
We've been advertising for a few weeks. Matthew Gutter was current, was serving or is serving. He would like to be reappointed, since we do not have any other applicants. I just need to...
Move to approve the reappointment of Matthew Gutter as presented.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider for approval requisition number 18 for Series 2021B Harmony Grove Phase One Project Fund.
Requisition is for 243,9902, and those funds are going to be paid to March Weston and Adrian Enterprises.
And Mub.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right, Mub.
Move that we approve requisition 18 for the Series 2021B Harmony Grove Phase One Project Fund as presented.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider for approval requisition number two for Series 2023A University Town Center Property Tax Bonds Project Fund.
Requisition is for 948,79593, and those funds will be paid out to Falcon Services for pre-construction services.
And I understand our legal counsel has a question into the developer, so I'd like to go ahead and prove this contingent on the question being asked by our legal counsel being answered to his satisfaction.
Okay.
If that's a motion, then second.
Okay. Move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any other new business?
The only other piece that I have, I'm not sure if this is new business, but it is requesting the three commissioners sign this. Received a questionnaire from the state DHHR. It's the Emergency Medical Services Salary Enhancement Fund, and it's a questionnaire that asks various questions about EMS services in Montague County. I forwarded this to Forrest Wayne from the EMS service, and he has responded with all the data that they were requesting, and it's just requesting the three things.
Okay, Enforce is here if you have any questions. I would move that we approve the questionnaire as presented.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any other new business?
No.
Anyone have any other new business? Okay. Reports from elected officials and department supervisors.
Morning.
Good morning.
Just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, last Thursday, the state was here. As you're aware, we get monitored by the state through the appraisal side and through mapping. So last week, they were up, and they've been monitoring our mapping department over the course of time. So last week, the gentleman came up, did some more monitoring of it, and then met with Kelly Green and John Ferguson, who, two of our mappers, brought up as supervisors from that. John Ferguson supervises our mapping department. Kelly does the transfer. She's also with the mapping department. So sitting through the exit interview, it was so nice to sit there and hear the gentleman say, we passed for one, which is always a good thing, but passed every category, okay? So there was just nothing there. And just some of the highlights of that were that Mon County is so much further ahead from what he said, and that the information that is received from here is very trustworthy and very noteworthy from that. And also, a big shout out to Kelly and the ladies in the transfer department, that our transfer notes are well done, and they're just more advanced and well just laid out from a standpoint. So yes, it's a moment here to brag on that, but if Kelly and John just step up here for a minute just to be recognized for their departments, and it's not only them, as they know too, it's the staff that are working with them. So we also have John Harblin and Ryan Price, who are mappers, and in the transfer department, we have Joanne Marks, Rhonda Coulter, Jody Carlson, Nancy Holbert, and Kim Probst. So all those folks there need to get some high marks there for the job well done with that. But I wanted to bring John and Kelly down today, so that recognition could be forwarded to those two supervisors along with their staff. Do you guys have anything you want to share regarding the interview? But no, I'm very appreciative. I mean, that's a lot of work that has to go into that. Mapping is just not an easy thing to do, and the transfer notes aren't either from a standpoint, and so those departments do an excellent job with that. I want to thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As Mark, I'd say thank you. For someone that uses the database and the mapping and the transfer notes almost on a daily basis, not just in this county, but surrounding counties, I can tell you, Mon County has so much more information. I can't tell you how many times I've looked at it, notes by FERC, just always, transfer note by FERC. It's just, it's implanted in my brain.
Well, it was nice, yeah, it was nice to hear from the monitor that our, our transfer notes are very detailed.
Yeah, when they're trying to piece together a puzzle for a 100-year title, it's valuable to have those insights and notes for people that are immersed in it every day, so.
And you know, maybe it's a department you don't see as much on the third floor because the ladies are down in there, but they're hunkered in there, and to understand a little bit more about what they have to do, you have to spend time with them to understand that process in which they have to go through. So I wanted to share that with you all. The last thing is here, you're probably aware that the House bill in the special session, 125, had an adjustment regarding the motor vehicle tax. So now, it's, if you've already prepaid to full, you still get your half credit, and you can, as long as it's paid timely.
Great.
All right. All right, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll have reports from county commissioners.
Just a couple of things. I've gotten, I mean, our kids are back in school now, grade schools, high schools, university. I've gotten calls from two different bus drivers, county, or school bus drivers indicating, please, just if you see a school bus, even if the stop sign's not out, if they're stopped, take a look first and make sure there's no kids out in the streets. They've been, it's been a problem early on. I know traffic's bad. There's construction, and people are in a hurry, but it's not, our kids' safety should be paramount first and foremost in our minds as to whether or not you get to your meeting in time. Don't pass the school bus, please. Also, just with general traffic, in this town, there's, I was just coming down Don Knotts Boulevard the other day, and someone whizzes past me, and you know, they're weaving in and out of traffic, and sure enough, when I get to the light at the Westover Bridge, you know, I pull up there first in line. I pull up, you know, 40 seconds later, and I went through the intersection before they did. So the point is, you don't have to necessarily go 50 miles an hour to get to the same point you'll get to, and you know, with the light, you sit there the same amount of time. It's just incredibly frustrating. Our streets are narrow, and we've been working on that with the MMPO and our, and the DOH and trying to help some congested areas, but with these kids walking around at the numbers they are, please just be careful and drive with some ration and responsibility. That's all. My soapbox, sorry.
Yeah, that was the same thing I brought up last week, that, you know, we are coming into the school year. Please, everybody be, be careful. Since our last meeting, last Wednesday, after our meeting, I had a call with our broadband team to get an update and discuss a possible partnership, so some good news coming for that, hopefully. Thursday, as I mentioned last week, I was moving my daughter to Winston-Salem, but on the way, I was still working. I was interviewed by a consultant working on a health department certification efforts, and then at night, we had our MMPO meeting. Saturday, I had, Saturday and Sunday, I had a couple days of downtime with my family before school starts and also to celebrate Jackie's birthday, which was on Monday. Monday, on the way back, I did have a call with the Clay Patel PSD, our administrator, and the Blacksfield Volunteer Fire Department Chief to talk about a couple of needs for the fire department in that area. And it was a good call, and I appreciate Joanne getting on that call and offering to give us some answers to a couple of questions that we've been trying to get for a while. Yesterday, I had a meeting, oh, mixing my days here. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow, I have Mylon Park Foundation meeting. Friday, we have staff reports, a broadband tag-up, and it's MHJ's first home football game, so they play South Charleston. So Saturday, as our administrator mentioned, there's the Wadestown Show and Sale. Monday, we have a meeting with the WAD, and Tuesday, Mylon Park Foundation Executive Committee meeting, and then in the afternoon, we have our proactive HR call, so shaping up to be a pretty busy week. Mark, staff, thank you guys very much for all that you do. There's so many different opportunities where people comment on the good work that you do, and Mark, thank you for bringing your staff in and making sure that they're recognized in front of our, in front of the public. And that's all I have.
Okay. Just a couple events coming up this weekend. If you haven't been out to Mason Dixon Historical Park, they have the Mountain Spirit Powel 2023, where it celebrates Native American culture, and it's fun for the whole family. It's from 10 to 5 both days, and I usually go there, and it's, it's really nice. The second, I received a letter from the Community Coalition for Social Justice, and they're having a social and environmental justice fair at Hazel Ruby McQuain Amphitheater on Sunday, September 17th, from 2 to 4 p.m. I did attend the state refugee settlement meeting, and that's every other month to just keep us updated with the total amount of refugees that are coming here. Surprisingly, the majority are Ukrainian and then Haitian, so the two majority, those are the groups. And we are growing, we had, I think, 34 this year in Montague County that they're working with, but we are continuing to work with them. Also, I know it's warm out, but we have the National Christmas Tree coming here, and it's sponsored by 84 Lumber, and it will... it's sponsored by Eighty-four Lumber, and it will be stopping several places in our county, and we are gonna have a, an event on November eleventh with the Christmas tree and some other events, and we'll be blocking off High Street down below. I can't, I'm not allowed to give any more information because we're still working on it, but we will be coming back, and I have another meeting coming up on that, and just to try and get the Christmas tree downtown on High Street is, is unbelievable, because of how large it is with the truck. So we're working on, we're gonna probably have to close some roads and have the truck go up Walnut Street and make the turn. It's, it's, but it is gonna be an event, and I hope, you know, it's gonna be a kids' event, we're gonna have a number of different things, and we hope that everyone will come out and see that. That is all I have, so.
Move to it, Aaron.
Second.
Okay, we'll be gone.